The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Russell, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vocaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Krusen, President Reed, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Conway, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman French, Alderman Cone, 22 present.
A quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Sister Shelly Hogan of School of Sisters in Notre Dame
Good and gracious God, we thank you for bringing us here today to serve the people of St. Louis. Please give us the strength and vision to see the needs and respond to them. Keep us enthusiastic and energetic as we work with our constituents and with each other. Encourage and support us in striving for peace and justice in all that we do. We ask you to bless us in every way, confident that you hear our every prayer and answer our every need.
Thank you, Sister, for your beautiful prayer. Move for adoption of a courtesy resolution calendar. Entertain a second on that motion. Second by the Alderman from the 12th. We have a couple courtesy resolutions, but Alderman from the 16th has a special guest today, so I don't know if you want to introduce your special guest before we move forward with that courtesy resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Last week I told you I was heading out to San Diego to see my son graduate, and today I can say for the first time, I would like to introduce to you Private Behringer, United States Marine Corps.
Let's stand and give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Pam. I'm not sure. All of the guests along the back wall. Is any, Harry, is anybody, are they performing or anything? All these guests, I'm not sure. Okay, they're just here, okay. Somebody's special guest, okay. Alderman from the, just hold it, Alderman, because we're within the courtesy resolutions calendar. I saw them there, I didn't know that if they were there to perform for the new private or what was going on. Alderman Carter, would you like to approach the dais for Resolution Number 10 for Reggie? Mayor of Dalewood, would you like to join us here at the dais?
I'm sure that, and then you. I want to present this, this resolution to Reggie Jones. Reggie was born and raised in the 27th Ward. He went to school with my dad, which, he, well, he looks fairly young, and his mother still, still lives in my ward. She lives right, right across the street from my office, so we want to present this resolution to you, Reggie, and this is the first time that I get to stand up here and present a resolution, so I'll just read a small piece of it. Reggie was born and, born and raised in the 27th Ward in the city of St. Louis of Missouri. He is the youngest of six children, born to Frank and Ann Jones, and I knew his dad. Dad was a real great man, did a lot in, in the community. Reggie has been elected to three offices. In 2010, he was elected to the Riverview Gardens School Board. In 2011, he was elected to the Office of Collector for the City of Dalewood. 2012, he was elected to the Office of Dalewood Board of Aldermen for the 3rd Ward. And on April 2nd, 2013, he became the first African-American male elected for mayor for the city of Dalewood. So can we please give him a round of applause for his efforts and everything that he has done?
Tell you, I'm so honored to be here today to congratulate the new mayor of Dalewood, Reggie. Reggie has been phenomenal, not just in Dalewood, but also throughout the city. He works with the kids throughout the city each and every day, making sure that they grow up and they have a good, strong father figure in their life, no matter what. He coaches the football team, and he has just invested in our community like nothing that I've ever seen, and I'm indeed honored that, that he is moving on to do greater things in Dalewood by being the mayor, and they're going to be served well, along with continuing all the works that he's doing for us in the city, so I think it's just amazing. I want to ask that this resolution be moved in bank. I'll entertain a second on the, second by the Alderman from the 19th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Any further comments? Any further, any further discussion? Alderman from the 19th.
Hi. I have to share with you all that, as much as I, you know I work with young people, this man probably has done 10 times what I've done. I admire him from afar, because I don't want to get in his way. He has a wonderful leader that he works for, and they have done tremendous things in the city, and you are a great role model, and I wish you could figure out how to make a few more of you and get them to commit some time. But thank you for what you do, Reggie, okay?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Before we move on, Reggie, this resolution is the highest honor this board has to give, and what it does is that it cements in time some of your many contributions on behalf of the citizens of the city of St. Louis up till now, so that 100, 200 years from now, when they research the records of the city, they'll find the name Reggie Jones buried amongst those records. And understand, not buried, I'll be gone in 200 years, all of us, but, but your, but your name's going to live on. So, so people 200 years from now, when they research the records of the city of St. Louis, they will know that you passed this way, and you contributed so much so that today we pause in our deliberations to recognize you for some of your many works. So I want to thank Alderman Carter and other ones, others that brought this resolution forward, and again, congratulate you on a job well done. This will be a first. He said, "I don't need to say anything, I'm cool." All right, I guess we'll, we'll let you off with that. Does your wife want to say anything?
No.
All right. Thanks again, Mayor. This next resolution. I'll ask Harry Kennedy if he can join me at the dais. Where'd he go? I just saw him taking pictures. Hey, Harry? Join me at the dais. You know, I've known, now, I've known Harry for a long time, and Harry is, has been, was a friend of mine before, before coming to help in my office here at the Board of Aldermen. He's been just a tremendous asset to the entire board. He gets along with people, no matter what, Harry has never met an enemy, ever, ever. The guy is just phenomenal, and he's been a, you know, a great treasure for, I know, my office and the Board of Aldermen as a whole. On Monday, Harry's moving on, he's going to go to work in Sharon Carpenter's office, and I want to congratulate him on that, and let him know that you always have friends, especially with me and my office, and members of the Board of Aldermen. So thank you for your many years of service, not just to the board, but in the state capitol and every place else. We have a resolution here. I'm going to ask that the clerk read this resolution, even though it's not out of custom, but this is kind of a special one for.
Whereas Harry J. Kennedy, a lifelong resident of the city of St. Louis, has served and supported the residents here in numerous capacities, and whereas Harry Kennedy has diligently served as the committee man for the 14th Ward of the city of St. Louis since 1991, and whereas Harry was a member of the Missouri House of Representatives from 1996 to 2001, and whereas Harry Kennedy was elected State Senator in 2001, representing the 3rd Senatorial District of Missouri, and was later reelected to what became the 1st District after redistricting, and served in this capacity until 2008. Whereas during his tenure as Missouri State Senator, Mr. Kennedy served on the following committees: Aging, Families, and Mental Health, Economic Development, Tourism, Local Government, Financial and Government Organizations, and Elections, and Pensions, Veterans Affairs, and General Laws Committee. And whereas in 2008, Harry accepted the position of Legislative Director for the President of the St. Louis City Board of Aldermen in a capacity, a capacity in which his love of the city of St. Louis and his passion for people allowed him to excel. And whereas Harry is now taking his talents in a new direction, but true to his dedicated nature, he will not be going away from the great citizens of St. Louis, and his track record of service and success will continue. Harry is moving from the Board of Aldermen to take on new challenges and provide more direct service to the citizens in the Recorder of Deeds Office. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis, that we pause in our deliberations to recognize and thank Harry J. Kennedy, and wish him continued success, achievement, and accomplishment, and we further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings, and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end, that it may be presented to a honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced on the 21st day of April by Honorable Louis E. Reed, President of the Board of Aldermen, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Russell, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vocaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, and Alderman Krusen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You read those a little fast. I was, wanted to move that we pass that resolution in bank. Entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by everybody. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, we've done the in-bank resolution. Any further comments? Any further comments? Alderman from the 20th.
Mr. President, members of the board, Senator, the Senator has been, as you indicated, a great representative of your office. As you may remember, we had some tedious legislation and so forth in the last session, we had some arguments, I did, with your representative, and nevertheless, he never lost his cool. You should see him on Cherokee Street dancing to the Latino rhythms and so forth. He has been a great trooper and goes to a lot of meetings, as you know, because you try to go to as many as you can, Mr. President, but you can't go to all of them, and so he has certainly represented you well, and I too wish you well, sir. Thank you, Senator.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I want to say a special congratulations to Harry, because we have a long history together. I first met Harry in 1995, when I went up to Jeff City as just a concerned citizen, stay-at-home mom, because I was concerned about the tax credits being taken away from the city of St. Louis. So Harry worked with me on that, and then when I became involved with the immigrant population of the city of St. Louis, he was then a senator, and he assisted me with helping getting certain services to different immigrant populations. Then he hired me as his in-district legislative assistant, so I worked for Harry, and then I ran for Aldermen. So Harry, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My Alderman, Alderman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I just wanted to say a special thank you to Harry. I've, for those of you who don't know, lived up the street from him, from the time I was an infant until I was about 22. And most recently, when I've gone to lobby in Jeff City on various issues, Harry has been instrumental in putting me in touch with the people I need to talk to, and while I was running my campaign, and even now, he's continued to put me in touch with people that are important to talk to, so thank you for everything, Harry.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Harry, I've just been working with you for two years down here, it's a pleasure, but we've known each other for years. You were my state senator, state representative when I lived on Nottingham years ago, and I've always used to see you out there, you know, working and talking with people, and you're a very dedicated person, you're very loyal, and I think the citizens in the city of St. Louis, the wards you've represented, and all the areas, know that you've done a great job, and they're very much appreciated, and I just wish you well on your new endeavors downstairs, and we won't hold that against you, because you hired the Alderman from the 16th.
Any further comments? Any further comments? Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Harry, I have to admit, when I saw you here, and they said you were going to be working for the board, I wanted to know why you wanted to do that, to yourself. But I have to also admit that you truly were breath of fresh air. You were what every person, whether you were elected or not, would like to have that type of interrelationship with someone when we're trying to be on the same course and do the same job on behalf of a body. I know you know what to expect, and you also delivered that to us. I don't ever remember having a cross word with you. Even when I was, my temperature was up, yours was always level. I appreciate that. I watched you come into various communities, and I know that you had not spent a lot of time in, in the past, but you just fit right on in, you did your job, you were there, you were positive, and so we appreciate that. And I also appreciate the fact that you don't, you never took position, you just did your job. So I never heard you say a cross word about any Alderman, I never saw you shun them or not speak. You are professional, and you're a good man, you know, you're a good man, and it comes from the heart. So I really want to thank you, and we shall have lunch and continue to communicate. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Harry, you know, as you've heard us say many times in the past, with the significance of the resolution, you know, compared to all of your works in the state, you, your name is already known through the state, it's on board bills and everything else within the state. What this does is put your name solidly on, on record here at the city of St. Louis from a legislative standpoint. So again, thank you for everything that you've done. Alderman from the 18th? Go ahead.
My cousin.
His cousin. Another Kennedy.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Yeah, this is my cousin, Harry Kennedy. Everyone would always get us confused when they look at us. I do have a twin brother, but he's not that person. We have so much in common. It has been a pleasure working with you. Before you came down here to the Board of Aldermen, the post office used to get our mail confused, and I would receive letters for Harry Kennedy, and you would receive that for Terry Kennedy, and so we met in exchanging the mail back to the proper person. And that happened for a while, until finally he made his way down here. So it didn't matter where his mail went at that point, we could sort it out once it got down here. So it has been good working with you, I've enjoyed the opportunity of really getting to know you, and to watch you work. You were filled with ideas, you were always bringing something new, and that is very much appreciated in government. I see you, you still are gluttony for punishment. So enjoy yourself if you go into your next endeavor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further comments? Any further comments? We're also going to have cake in the conference room over here, right after, right after the meeting, to thank Harry. Again, Harry, congratulations and thanks for everything that you've done to make our city a better place. Thank you for all that you've done to make our state a better place. Thank you for all that you've done to make our office run more efficient, and this Board of Aldermen operate more efficiently. Thanks, Harry.
Is it Mr. Jones? Thank you. How's everybody doing? I'll be very quick. Mr. Jones was the first person not to say anything, and I didn't want to be the second, so I'll just say a couple thing, a couple words. I admire each and every one of you. You are the lifeblood of this city. You work hard, you don't get paid much money. Maybe the state legislature needs to do something about that. And you put up with a lot of guff from people who don't see what you do every day, day in, day out, minute in, minute out. I admire you, all of you, greatly. Each 28 wards have different challenges, each are very dynamic, each make this city great. I've always lived in the city, I love this city. This city has a lot to offer. You are a testament to that. You are on the front lines of the battles that we have in the city, but also the successes because of you. I have a heavy heart that I'm leaving, but also a glad heart that I am going downstairs to work for a fine woman, Sharon Carpenter, Recorder of Deeds, who we all know. Together, the Board of Aldermen, the Recorder of Deeds, I can promise you this, I will work with you and for you to continue to make this city a great place to live, work, and raise a family. I really appreciate this, I appreciate our friendship, and don't be a stranger, come down and visit.
I thought that, like I was just telling Harry, that was, that was a phenomenal speech. Let's give him one more round of applause, I tell you, that was straight from the heart. We have to get, we're getting this framed for you, Harry, by the way. We wanted to make sure we got it in bank today. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar with the, with amendments. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. That, we're returning to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour, who is with us.
Alderman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Today I'd like to introduce as my, as my special guest, retired Captain Dan Rektine, who is Director of Fraud Prevention Task Force, and Rachel Smith, Prosecuting Attorney for Community Affairs.
Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd want to introduce my guests today, Rhonda Smythe and Sonia Emmons from Trailnet, and Luke Sappa from St. Louis
Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. If you see on your desks today, you have some items that are compliments of my constituent from the 16th Ward, Kathy Dorr, because she's here from the International Robotics Program that's here this weekend at the Convention Center. There's over 80,000 students from 36 countries, from all around the world. All the events are free and open to the public. And just a side note, before I point out Kathy, she had me introduce the robotics championship at DeBerg High School. And one of the things I told those children is, what they may not know is, when they're doing their robotics today, that they are helping our country's servicemen who are coming home after they've been hit with IEDs. So they are serving a very important purpose, and I'm so proud of them, and I'm very happy to say that Kathy Dorr has been leading the robotics program right here in the St. Louis region. Thank you.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest, the committee man for the 22nd Ward, Mr. Andre Williams, who's hiding in a corner right over there.
Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my special guest, my son here, Dominic, Dominic French.
All right. Welcome, Dominic. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today, Ms. Shirley Stennis of the Ameren UE family, Ameren, Missouri, and Rodney Krim over there, also Leroy Grant from AT&amp;T, and my very special guest today is Larry Arnowitz.
Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board, I'd like to have Al from the firefighters, and David Home from the pipe fitters is my special guest, and Celeste Reader from the Realtors on the way. She must be sitting on the side.
Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to announce as my special guest today, the state Representative of the 84th District, Ms. Carla May. Thank you.
Alderman from the 20th.
Mr. President and members of the board, I never do this, but my colleague, the Alderman from the 4th, forgot one person in the UE family, or the Ameren family, Yolanda Poe, who is my next best friend next to Shirley Stennis, is here today with us as well.
Welcome, Yolanda. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 4th.
Mr. President, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mr. Aunt Percy Green Jr. from the Fire, St. Louis Fire Department.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, I'd like to wrap. Alderman from 10th, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. As we stand here on April 26th, this is Arbor Day, and we all celebrate our love for trees. This day was started on a treeless plain in Nebraska back in 1872 by a man looking for something to hug, so he planted a tree. That man is here with us, Brett Steffen.
With dispensal line items five through 10, first reading board bills.
Board Bill Number Two, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 901 through 23 Locusts, 216 North 9th Street, 421 North 8th Street, containing severability clause. Board Bill Number Three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving the petition to establish the Hampton Boat, Birthhold Community Improvement District. Board Bill Number Four, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and President Reed, and ordinance to provide for the borrowing of funds in anticipation of the collection of tax payments levied by the city for depositing in a general revenue fund for a calendar year ending December 31st, 2013, and remaining uncollected, and other revenues remaining to be collected and deposited in a general revenue fund for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Five, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from A, Single Family, and J, Industrial District, to the H, Area Commercial District, for properties on Garner, Manchester, and Waldmer, containing an emergency clause. Excuse me. Board Bill Number Six, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on Stadium Plaza between Clark and Walnut, a two-foot strip along the north side of Clark between Stadium Plaza and Broadway. Board Bill Number Seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the 20-foot wide north-south alley in City Block 22 bounded by First Car, Second, and Biddle. Board Bill Number Eight, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen, Alderwoman Young, Schmid, President Reed, Hubbard, Ingracia, Ortman, Wussels, Florida, Davis, Vocaro, Ogilvy, Cohn, Williamson, Cruzen, Villa, Howard, and Alderman Carter, and ordinance adopted pursuant to the terms and conditions of the recently approved Proposition A voter initiative accepting local control and responsibility for the city's police department. Board Bill Number Nine, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance pertaining to parking within 1600 block of Belt Avenue Residential Parking District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the 1600 block of, block of Belt Residential Parking District, and prohibiting the parking within the district of any vehicle which does not display the authorized permit containing definitions, a penalty clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Ten, sponsored by Alderman Cohn, and ordinance to repeal Chapter 15.86 of the St. Louis Revised Code relating to fortune tellers. Board Bill Number Eleven, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and an ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission, Board of Public Service, and the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute an agreement and contract of sale for the exchange of property between St. Louis and owner, the owner and operator of Lambert Airport and North Park Partners, providing for the sale and exchange of 1.23 acres of property containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Twelve, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport Local Concept Food and Beverage Concession Agreement, AL 231, between the city and OHM Concession Group, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3939 Botanical, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number Fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4014 Russell, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number Fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4217 Russell, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2301 Arsenal, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number Seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2720 through 22 South Jefferson, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number Eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3016 McNair, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Cohn, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3931 Gustein. Board Bill Twenty, sponsored by Alderman Vocaro, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5429 through 31 Chippewa, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty One, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1424 North Vandeventer. Board Bill Number Twenty Two, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2632 Russell. Board Bill Twenty Three, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2309 South Jefferson. Board Bill Twenty Four, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1516 through 30 North Jefferson, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty Five, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3460 Oak Hill, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty Six, sponsored by Alderman Schmid, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2648 Cherokee, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty Seven, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for the Grandelet Scattered Sites III redevelopment area, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty Eight, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4342 Hunt, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Twenty Nine, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4350 Shoto, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number Thirty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4216 through 22 Gibson, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Thirty One, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 5162, 5164, and 5166 through 68 Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. Board Bill Thirty Two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from B, Two-Family Dwelling District to J, Industrial District, to the J, Industrial District only in City Block 3965, for properties on Kentucky Avenue, Pappen Street, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty Three, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2649 Russell Boulevard. Board Bill Thirty Four, sponsored by Alderman Wussels, and ordinance adopting pursuant to Section 70.210, 70.325 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri 2000 Edition, authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Comptroller to enter governmental cooperation agreement by and among the city, St. Louis County, Missouri, the Economic Council of St. Louis County, and St. Louis Development Corporation concerning the combination of existing SLCEC and SLDC development, business development, business finance, and entrepreneurial support services containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number Thirty Five, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from F Neighborhood Commercial District to B, Two-Family Dwelling District, in City Block 3389, for property on College, East College, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty Six, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3619 through 25 Grand Ole Square, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Before we move forward, we also have some high school students from Central Visual and Performing Arts with their instructor. You want to come up and introduce them so we know who they are?
All right, these are three top students. I have to say that. Jasmine Thompson, Taylor Prince, and Jennifer Sterm. They're, they're here to watch local government in action.
Let's give them a round of applause. So, I ask, they're all of our honored guests today. Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bills Three and Four, to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill Eight, to the Legislation Committee, Board Bill Number Ten, to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bills Eleven and Twelve, to the Streets Committee, Board Bills Six, Seven, and Nine, to the Housing Committee, Board Bills Two, Five, Sixteen, Twenty Four, Thirty One, Thirty Two, Thirty Four, and Thirty Five, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty One, Twenty Two, Twenty Three, Twenty Five, Twenty Six, Twenty Seven, Twenty Eight, Twenty Nine, Thirty, Thirty Three, and Thirty Six. That's the extent of reference to committees.
That's a very good idea. Thank you. I thank you once again, sir.
Thank you. With dispensal line items thirteen through nineteen. First reading resolutions.
Resolution Number Thirty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, the Enterprise Zone for Manchester Investors LLC.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution Number Thirty.
Yes, Mr. President, could you refer that to the Housing Committee, please?
It's been moved by the Alderman that we sign Resolution Number Thirty to the Housing Committee, I'll entertain a second on that motion. Second by the Alderman from the 22nd, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Number Thirty to Housing.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
With dispensal line item twenty-two, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Friday, May the third, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? We also, you will have a list of the committee assignments by this afternoon. Been working on these things around the clock, getting them down to try to meet some of the goals that everybody asked for, that between three and five committee assignments per person. We've had to shrink a number of committees significantly to be able to meet that goal. But it's, it's my understanding that that's what everybody wanted. So, we're working through that, and you will have those committee assignments by close of business day is my goal to wrap it up. If you have any questions, directly after the meeting, I'll be available for any questions or concerns, anything anybody may have on the upcoming assignments. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the seventeen, Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on the motion to excuse. Alderman from the 13th, recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to, move to excuse the Alderman from the 3rd, 14th, and 25th wards due to necessary absence.
Been moved from the Alderman from 13th, second by the Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. One more quick note, on the committee assignments, normally, we do them for two years. This time, we're going to do them for a year. That way, we have an opportunity for other people to serve, and still be able to shrink the committees and not cause too many people too much pain. Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, 10:00 a.m., May 3rd.
Moved by the Alderman from 13th, I entertain a second on that motion. Second by the Alderman from the, from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Stand adjourned.